Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, we're gonna get the meeting started. If you can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the August 3rd meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Calo has our dog from the dog kennel. For those of you who aren't...
You said August.
Yeah, did I say August? Maybe I did. Every week, we have a dog from the kennel, so Mr. Calo has him to show you for today.
This week's featured dog is about a year and a half old, female. She's a brindle boxer. Bless you. Bless you. Bless you. She's been with us since September. She's really looking for a home. She's a little over adoption now, right, Jack? We don't have to wait till Saturday, do we? She's been there that long? It's a beauty. We'll give you a special dispensation. Let's get her a nice home. Is that my dog kennel? How many dogs?
Twenty-seventh.
We have twenty-seven available dogs. Please stop by as he is.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
No advances during payments requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, 1247-12. It's a solid waste request for a new vehicle. It's a 2002 vehicle that they currently have. It's got seventy thousand miles on it. And talking with Mr. Bailey, I really don't think that it's... My opinion is it's not necessary in order to purchase the vehicle. They do have the vehicle. We do have other vehicles in our fleet that have lower mileage that we could transfer over if they feel they need another vehicle. And I think we could use that 16-5 in order to go pay down the debt services on solid waste building.
Mr. Bailey?
I think Mr. Cordez, do you have a...
Oh, okay, Jim, I'm sorry.
Well, normally what we do is just the opposite. We deplete the vehicles and some of the other outlying funds that have the ability to purchase, and then we transfer that vehicles to the general fund and then form that out to some of the departments that need vehicles. And that's how we've improved the vehicle flow through the general fund. After a responsible timeframe, we can deplete that vehicle. The vehicle is almost ten years old, and there's no objections on auditing standards to say it's, you know, we call this in the miles that it's reached a state where it can be transferred over for another use. We've done that at several of our funds that...
Well, it's similar to what we do with the buses in time. When they've reached their life, and then they can go out.
Right, so, I mean, I'm just... I talked to Mr. Bailey about this when they wanted to buy the vehicle, and we've done this several times over the last years. I'm not disagreeing with Mr. Williams' assessment of the vehicle, only simply stating that we've used this to shore up our fleet vehicles, which... And then also to move them out to places like domestic relations, and, you know, we've suffered in weights and measures and so forth. That's how we've gotten some vehicles.
Speaking of weights and measures, I'm sure you got my second email. I know Brett Schuster has emailed us numerous times. I think he's up to his sixth request now.
Sixth request, yes.
Like, once a week, he's asking for a vehicle that he needs, a truck. He's using a car currently, so would this be a vehicle that we could transfer over to weights and measures, or where would this go?
I think this is a car.
This is a vehicle, a car?
He needs a pickup truck.
Yeah, I think it's a car.
He's asked to have the vehicle that they turned in, that we repaired, to be returned to him.
Right.
Well, certainly, you know, they turned the vehicle and said they needed another vehicle, and that this one was too dilapidated to use, so we rehabbed it, spent money on it, now they want it back. Go figure.
Well, I'd rather go ahead and give them the ad vehicle back than go out and buy a new vehicle.
I would agree with you.
Yeah, without a doubt.
I've instructed Mr. Shaw of the work out the issue with weights and measures.
My issue is, you know, we've looked at the car usage throughout the county, the fleet that we do have. When it's underutilized, most of the people are using it to train, go back and forth to, like, the transportation station, or just kind of run around Illyria.
How would you suggest they get there? We don't have any vehicles.
Right, I agree with getting the vehicle.
The way I get around it is I use my vehicle to do it, but that's just my assessment. But we have a large fleet of vehicles, and while we have debt on a building, which is preventing money to go back to local governments through solid waste grants, I believe that we should use this money to pay down the debt, so we can get this money back to the local governments.
We're paying that debt service down quite quickly. We've got another year on the debt service on that building, approximately fourteen months. If I... It's October, probably fourteen, fifteen months, you have to pay that off, and then that money will revert back to that. But we have the ability to get some. We said, Tom, we don't allow our employees... When you say you use your own car, we all do as electeds, but our employees aren't covered under our course of insurance to use their own vehicles. We've had that discussions prior years on doing reimbursements. So, I mean, if we can use the solid waste dollars at sixteen thousand to buy a vehicle for them...
But we have plenty of...
Because their employees are... Let me finish, because their employees are driving all over, you know, going to schools and, you know, doing the presentations. I mean, it's a large county, solid waste department's very active. I'd rather do that and then put a vehicle into our fleet that can be used by the DR. I mean, we're having a hard enough time finding ways to up vehicles, and we still gotta look at buying vehicles for them.
Yeah, but we have plenty of vehicles right now. There's no vehicle... If you need a vehicle, you can go down and get a vehicle anytime. So it's, uh... I just feel that we should use this money, pay down the debt service. Seventy thousand miles for a vehicle that they already have, that they can utilize for solid waste? Seventy thousand miles is not a lot of miles on a vehicle.
The solid waste plan is a five-year plan, correct?
Yes.
Is it stipulated exactly what the benefits to the various communities are for recycling? Or the grant money?
Well, we have to buy the plan. Buy the plan. You have to do the educational component. Keith, if you can come up here and help me, just so I don't miss anything in the plan. I've been on that committee five years, but it's a book about two and a half inches thick, so I don't want to miss something. First of all, the dis... Explain what we do, Keith, and what our employees do, so the public knows. I mean, a lot of these people here probably aren't even familiar with our solid waste department, other than the blue bag collection or the new carts you have at your home.
The district is an agency fund, first of all. It's not a general fund department, so we have our own source of revenue, which is declining, by the way. We do have a line item in our new Lea Plan that wanted to affect June 1st to buy a vehicle this year and replace the car. We have a line item in the budget for 2014 to replace the van. So we projected the replacements of these vehicles, and usually what happens is, like Mr. Cordez says, our older vehicles go into the fleet to be issued to the other departments as they need. As far as education, we're required to do educational component, and it's in the Administrative Code of Ohio that was put in place by IAEA quite a few years ago. We reach over five thousand students annually. Brandy's out in the field, starting now, about three days a week. So that's mainly what the vehicle is used for, is get her around and get me back and forth to state meetings, all right? Like I said, as far as community grants go, community grants are very rigid. It's in Appendix H of the plan. The funds are determined on revenue based from the previous year. They're divided based on recycling that the communities do. So we have a program in place to fund that. In the past, there's been a lot of monies handed out, community grants, that weren't as well managed, but we're well managing them now, all right? And fact is, when we did the community grant meeting, every community seemed fit to send a representative to the meeting. So all thirty-four communities were represented when we talked about grants. It's not near as much money. We're gonna be a two and a half million dollar agency from here on out, or less, all right? No 3.5, 3.7 million in our budget anymore. It's not there. So we have to live within our means. So we budget things out ten years, and there's line items in the budget for everything we do, all right?
And that was approved by all the communities in the passage of the solid waste plan, and their fiscal officers, who basically go through the plans, I would say more than the trustees, to see what the dollars are all approved. That is expenditures and how the plan should be handled. So this is not something driven by the Commissioners. It was driven by the Policy Committee, which is made up of one Commissioner and community members, a township representative, and all agreed on and then voted and passed.
Yeah, I think not all the townships agreed upon it.
Well, the majority of it, right?
Right, the majority, and a lot of them...
We made the revised code.
But when you talk to the elected officials, the reason that they agreed to it is because they don't want the EPA to come in and take over. It's not that they actually agree with what's in the plan, it's just, we either agree with it, or we could have something worse with the EPA coming in.
Don't argue with that.
So, but I guess my question, and Keith, I know you do a great job, and I told you, me bringing this up is no reflection on you.
No, I'm not worried about that.
The car you have works for you, getting you back and forth.
Yeah, but it's cost me dearly, too. Had to replace the entire cooling system this year, and all the brake rotors and the exhaust system, so, you know, we've done a lot of repair to this car. It's still running, it's very close to seventy thousand mile right now. The problem is not mileage, it's age. You got a ten-year-old vehicle that's decaying more from age than it is from use, so it's like all the vehicles in our staple downstairs. They decay with age more than they do with use, so...
Again, going back to the auditor, Brett Schuster asking for a truck, I'd rather do a repair than actually go through and buy a new vehicle.
It gets to a point of negative return, though, Tom, on a ten-year-old vehicle where you're putting in cooling systems and the brake rotors, and you start throwing three, four, five thousand dollars at a vehicle that doesn't have value.
But we're gonna put this back into the fleet for the township.
Right, which is casual use, though, but it's just casual use. Like you said, those don't use as much. This is a vehicle that's out three days a week, all over the county, you know, late at night, I mean, she's doing things late to the thing.
Well, we can go through, we have newer vehicles in our fleets that we could transfer over there. I'm just, again, I'm looking at using the sixteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars to pay down the debt, that's all, and try to get these grants going back to local...
The debt will be paid off next year.
The grants for the plan, Tom, it's already approved five-year, how the grants will go back.
Right, but the... It was approved, or it was agreed that you would not get the grants back until the debt on solid waste, the building was paid off.
Which is gonna happen in a year, or a year and a half?
Fourteen or fifteen months.
Next year, 2013.
My thoughts are, this was already in the five-year solid waste plan. It was a line item. We have another line item coming up, you said, in 2014 for a van.
Fourteen, yeah.
It's already been approved and ratified by all the different communities and the EPA, so I would just say, I don't know if we have to single that one out, or just approve the whole...
Approve all the requisitions.
All the requisitions as a whole?
He can vote no on the one, if he'd like to.
Yeah, I'll be a no vote on that requisition.
Okay, on the rest of them?
Is there any further discussion, then?
Nope.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, with the one requisition, 1247-12. Make an exception.
An exception, sir, thanks.
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the Summer Sheet for employees within jurisdictions in Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
I expected a light morning, so I didn't plan anything for executive session. So I don't have any personnel actions this morning.
No, exactly. Well, we haven't heard from Jerry yet, so...
And, well, and we did strategically discuss upcoming negotiations last week for an extensive period of time, so we're on track with that. So currently, I don't have any real purpose to go into executive session this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Approved away with the reading of the same of the County Commissioners' meeting minutes of September 26, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under 911, approve an MOU with the City of Sheffield Lake to join the county's 911 dispatch system. County will advance out of 911 funds and authorize payment of fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and five dollars to the city for improvements, and the city is to repay five thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents each year for ten years, beginning July 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Nice job, Mr. Cordez, for bringing Sheffield Lake on board. Thank you.
I gotta thank Sheffield Lake for being cooperative. It'll be still several more weeks before we incorporate them into the dispatching, but they were very good to work with, and I'm looking forward to working with them moving into the future. Few more targets out there that we need to gain cooperation with, but I think we're doing about eighty-five percent of the jurisdictions out there.
My number brings really forward-thinking, progressive thinking, he's doing a nice job on Sheffield Lake.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under Community Development, award contract to Dennis Concrete Inc., Wellington, in amount of four thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars, which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders to demolish 626 Kenneworth Avenue, Sheffield Lake, through the NSP guidelines. Twenty-seven invitations were sent, four received, this being the most responsive compliance specifications, and will be paid from Contract Services account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Award contract to Class Construction Inc., Avon Lake, in the amount of three thousand, which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders for area Megan Whitman in 25760 State Route 58, Wellington, for furnace replacement. Twenty-two invitations were sent, three received, this being the most responsive compliance specifications, and will be paid from the CHIP Home, House, or Rehab account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under Developmental Disabilities, request to Lorraine County Auditor pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5705.03 to certify Lorraine County Board of Commissioners the total current tax valuation of the county and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated for five years for 1.6875 renewal and 1.6875 replacement on the May 7, 2013 ballot.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under Prosecutor, sale of property valued at less than twenty-five hundred at a private sale in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 307.12I, which consists of two Motorola W385 cellphones, twenty-six BlackBerry Rim Bold 9650 cellular phones, and five Motorola Droid 2 Global A956 cellphones. These phones are obsolete and unfit for the use of which they were acquired.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, County Master?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As an addition to the Sheffield Lake dispatching collaboration coming up, I'm pleased to let you know that next week, on the 10th, I want to have a little event down at the 911 Center with regard to our services, and I'm gonna have the media invited into the center, and I want you guys to meet some of the new Safety Force Dispatchers. October 7th will be our switch-over date to combined Safety Forces dispatching, and I would like to have you come down to the center and take a look at the operation, see where we've gone over the last year. It's been a year of ups and downs, but we've met the goals and objectives that we needed to, and next week, we're going to be doing a combined console dispatching, and I want you to come down and recognize that out at our 911 Center. So that'll be on the 10th, and we'll be inviting all of our...
10 through the 7th.
We're gonna test, run this on the 7th. We're having you come in the 10th, just in case we have any crossover issues. You know, the first time you bake a cake, you don't invite everybody to come have it, you know, you can do it.
What time are we doing that, Jim, on the 10th?
I don't have the time yet, but we're gonna try to make it very conducive to you guys. It's a good time to meet your new employees down there. We've had a lot of changes. We've, you know, some people have gone by the wayside, some new ones have come in, there's been a lot of transitional issues, but I think it's a good time to go down there and recognize personally the hard work of the staff there, and specifically the dispatchers who have had to combine two completely different jobs into one job. We have a lot to be proud of down at that center, and so I'll have some more specifics to you, but I think it's necessary that I let folks know that we're gonna be doing that next week, and we'll get a press release out on that, and we'll invite the media to come down and just see just how well we're doing down at that center. This is one of those consolidations that shouldn't fly under the radar screen, and there's bigger things that are gonna be talked about during that event for a few additional phases of cooperation that are gonna save considerable money and bring an amazing amount of efficiency with resources in our community. So we're moving in an exceptionally right direction with this. So that'll be next week, more to follow, okay?
A lot of communities have tried this across the state and have not been as successful as we have been.
Well, look at Cuyahoga, they don't have any combined dispatching, and they just got a huge, several hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it may even exceed a million dollars in grant money to try to do just a few, a handful of their communities on the east side to try to coordinate their dispatching.
I'm familiar with smaller counties in the southern part of the state who have three piece apps, and some of them actually get their stuff coming out of West Virginia. They can't get along in the small communities and put it together, so this is big for us.
Well, and it's only gonna get bigger. The, you know, once you have the proper momentum and the proper guidance and you're getting the successful outcomes, people naturally want to be part of that. We're gonna be working very hard on this in the next two to three years, but we needed to reach this milestone before we could achieve any other collaborations with the community, because we weren't prepared to provide the services that they needed in a consolidated way. And, you know, much credit goes to the Sheriff's Department and his folks, too, and all the way down, you know, to the deputies who had to go through us changing over, and there was some, you know, little nuances here and there, and, you know, they're the guys that are out there on the front line, and their safety was paramount, but still, that transition affected them greatly out there, and they're already fairly thinly staffed and have a difficult job, and they took these challenges with us during this change, so they've been partners, and they've been great all along the way, too.
I made several trips out there through the year, and operators have done a wonderful job trying to work together, even with the two departments combining, and some of the headaches that came along with it, and I just want to thank them for sticking with it and actually making this program successful, because without them, it would have never been successful.
I agree, a hundred percent. Took everybody, you know, being in the light bulb and pulling on the oars to get where we need to go. So, well, we're gonna pat ourselves on the back next week, and then we'll talk about what the future holds for a couple other significant developments that are going to greatly enhance the services in our community.
And when you say saving money, it's not so much even for the county, but all the entities that decide to come on board with us are saving a lot of money by having us perform their dispatch services for them, and it's all about cooperation, and like you said?
Definitely. I'm pretty happy with this. You know, remember what the question you asked.
I said, why didn't we do this a long time ago? And you said, because you never asked.
So, the other issue I have here this morning... Don, do you need this resolution this morning on this CHIP? I found it in my package.
That would be nice.
Pass this to the clerk for me.
More than one, or...
It's just one. It's a CHIP request. It's pretty standard, but I found it in my package this morning without much of an explanation as to what it... Maybe you want to come up and...
I'm sure it's the one I'm thinking of.
You want to wait till next week?
I'd like to wait till next week, if that's okay.
Okay, but that... Who wants to come down? You, because I don't generate those, so...
No, it's on October 3rd. No, it... We best, it says, it was written up for October 3rd meeting. I just, I might have to...
Okay. Why don't you take a look at this? We have people in the public, we can pull it after public comments and so forth, okay? Thanks, Don. That's all I have this morning, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds, Assistant County Prosecutor?
I have no need for an executive session.
Nobody suing us this week?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
Commissioners' report.
Well, like, the grants that we were just talking about and that we approved today, community development grants, I know one of the newspapers picked up on this, I read in the paper this morning, but for those of you here and those of you watching, and if maybe the other newspaper want to pick it up, there are additional grants available for home repair. Says Lorraine County Community Development Department is taking grant applications from low to moderate income homeowners who need financial assistance with health and/or safety-related repairs to their owner-occupied residences. The program operates on a first-come, first-served basis and can only assist income-qualified residents outside of the cities of North Ridgeville, Illyria, and Lorraine, because these communities administer their own programs for their residents. The repairs could address electrical, plumbing, roofing, heating, or mechanical systems, or eliminate the threats to health and safety. Grant assistance is available up to eight thousand dollars per eligible client, and applications, if you want to apply, call Angela Brown in our Community Development Department, and her phone number is 328-2322. I see we have a lot of people here from Carlisle Township, and I'm glad that you guys all came today. Obviously, this is a very important issue. If you spent Monday night talking to your township trustees about it, and now you want to come before us here in the Board of Commissioners to let us know where you guys are at this point in Brentwood Lake, so I'm gonna open it up to who I think there's somebody that's kind of spearheading this, the talk, so if you'd like to just come up, anybody that's going to come up, please state your name and address for the record, and you can spend as much time as you need to address this issue before us today.
Okay. My name is Karen Johnson.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, and I need to figure out how this thing works. To get my presentation on it?
No.
Looks like it's not.
Hold on one second.
I didn't know she had a presentation.
Me neither. Can you state your address though too?
Yes, it's Karen Johnson, 33 Lakeview Drive, Grafton, Ohio. And I live on Brentwood Lake.
Okay. I wasn't really planning on coming in today. In fact, a month ago, I was planning on doing my gardening, except when I was out doing my gardening, I felt my lungs starting to burn and I thought, "That's strange" because the only time I've ever felt that is when I'm near poison ivy because I'm really sensitive to it and then I look down and I see poison ivy and I get away from it and it's usually a minor thing. This was a major thing and it wasn't only happening in my backyard, it was happening in the whole neighborhood. Excuse me. I thought that, well, I didn't really know what to think, but it seemed like it went on for a couple of weeks and I was also working in the yard and I developed a rash on my one leg and I thought, "Well, maybe it's poison ivy," except that then it spread to my next leg and then it spread to my arm and then my whole body was itching. After that, I called, I started calling the Health Department. The Health Department said they can't be responsible if I'm allergic to people's weeds. I called and I knew it was coming out of the lake because as the wind would blow across the lakebed toward our house was when it was worse and when the wind would shift, it wasn't as bad. On more humid days, it was worse and I don't really have many weeds in my yard, it's all landscaped. So anyway, I knew where it was coming from, but I still don't really know what it's coming from. So that's when I started investigating. I called the CDC and didn't really know that the CDC is a one-way operation, you can't report anything to them. The EPA didn't care, the Health Department didn't care, neither locally nor Ohio-wide. And at that point, I really didn't know what to do. I just issued a bunch of warnings, told everybody I was evacuating my house and I went to Hilton Head for a week and a half. Right before then, I called Carlisle Township, told them that this was a problem and I asked this, and William Oliver recommended that I speak with the township trustees. I set up a meeting and I actually put together a document typing on my phone on the way to Hilton Head. My husband was driving. So anyway, that's why I'm here today and I wasn't really planning on putting together a production, but apparently it's turned into one, so we can get on with it. Brent, first I start out with a picture of Brentwood Lake. I don't know if you've all been out to the area and know what it looks like, okay? That's what it did look like. And this is what it looked like right after the breach, the first year after the breach. And this is what it looks like now. The weeds that you're looking at, the pink ones, we had, I had Carl Snyder out, soil and water, the day after I returned and Carl went down into the weeds and documented some things. And he pointed out that this pink stuff is smart weed and if you touch it, it burns your skin. There are also nettles down there that burn, that cause rashes and burn your skin. There's little poison ivy, Canadian thistle, Ravenna weed, the invasive species. There's a lot of weeds and they're about eight to 10 foot tall in the peak of the season. As you probably know, the dam was breached in February 2010 because of a deteriorated condition. ODNR at the time claimed it was a health and safety issue. The breach order was for an immediate breach just because of the concerns and what the concerns are now, after talking to my neighbors, there's even a more immediate health concern, but it seems like the health concern's being ignored. There's not, there's actually noxious weeds out in the lake. A noxious weed is actually something that's regulated by the Ohio Revised Code and I have the code there listed. And number one was Canadian thistle that's growing. I've never seen Canadian thistle grow, you know, six to eight feet tall, but it is out there. And those weed seeds are also, when the wind blows, like raining on our yard. We do organic gardening, Canadian thistles near impossible to get out of the yard without a toxic substance. So that's really bad as far as that. I had mentioned the respiratory and skin problems. My husband was also congesting up, he wasn't getting the lung burning and I've talked to other residents that were also getting more weed problems. I don't normally have weed allergies. I do have chemical sensitivities, but not weed allergies. There were children that, it's an attractive nuisance. There are children that wander out there and about, I don't know, a month to six weeks ago, my husband and I were working in the backyard and we heard a little girl crying and calling for her mother. We live next to the park, so, you know, the kids go into the park and after a while, we went over and my husband looked down and she was caught in all the prickers and she had taken her fishing bowl and cooler. I don't really know where she was going to fish, but I've heard other residents have asked or helped children out of the lakebed and you can't see them in eight-foot weeds. And you can see the picture of my rash. There's also a rodent overpopulation, there's mice, rats, raccoon, groundhog, possum, skunks. When I was typing this last night, a mouse ran by me, by my desk. I mean, when we talk about mice, I've had mice in my bedroom, I have mice in my living room, some people have trapped 20-some mice. These aren't like mice in your garage. These are mice because they're coming out of something that's harboring them and they're overbreeding. And later on, Dr. Buchanan will be talking about the health concerns because of the overbreeding of the rodents. And they're also damaging property. They're chewing on wires, they're making holes in our house. We have insulation in our house that's, you might have seen it on TV, that spray foam insulation. Lo and behold, the mice have gotten in between the house and the insulation and they're eating it all out. How do you get rid of the mice between the house and the insulation? It's never happened before, never. And now the snakes are coming out, Mother Nature takes care of itself, the snakes are coming after the mice. I'm not a snake person and, you know, when I walk out my door and there's a snake thrashing on my deck, I don't, I don't want to walk out my door and I like to garden. And they're not normal garter snakes, these are marsh snakes. I looked it up, I didn't even see it in the Snakes of Ohio, I had to go to the Snakes of Vermont to find it. It's a, it was, it's a ribbon snake and it's known for marshlands. What happens is in the summer, when it dries out, they come up out of the lake looking for water. So I'd see them laying next to my hose or when I go to turn on the hose, they'd be there and it's just, it's creepy. There's also mosquito overbreeding. The lakebed was contoured to hold water, not to shed water. So the whole lakebed has like dips in it and because of that, we were kind of saved by the drought this year, but in April, when I went outside, I had a long sleeve, I had long pants, I had welts on my neck. These aren't normal mosquitoes, these are like, I don't know what kind of mosquitoes, red welts on my neck. They'll get in your sleeves and they even can bite through your pants if you don't have really heavy pants on. And last year, they were even worse because we did have more moisture. But I did call the Health Department and discuss the problem with them. Bob from the Health Department is aware of the fact that they have been testing for West Nile virus in Brentwood. I had asked him that because someone told me that. He said, "I'm the one doing the testing," but he said spraying for them won't eradicate the problem. He said that it just won't work. In words, "You have to get rid of the source and the source is that they're standing water." And this, and the water's not only standing in those gullies, but all the storm sewers from Brentwood dump into the lakebed. None of that has been channeled into a central stream. So some of those depressions are just pooling water from the, from the storm sewers that are dumped in there because they were meant to be dumped into a lakebed, not into, not into, I mean, a lake, full lake, not into a lakebed. So that, that needs to be remedied. And right now, there is a project to make the storm sewers larger, but what that's going to do is just add more, more volume of water to the situation. Because of the breach, the property values have plunged. This is an example, I got this off of Zillow, this is actually my home, and if you look at the slope of the curve, the bottom line is the average property value in Lorraine County, or I shouldn't say Lorraine County, 44044 zip code, whatever that is. The top is my own property value and you can see right at the peak was when the breach was ordered. And so between that line and the bottom of that dip is the property value lost from the result of the breach. That has been confirmed from a real estate agent independently. He did not see this graph. I had him come out and he gave me an estimate on the drop in my home value and, you know, our home values dropped a lot. At the peak, our house was worth about $235,000. It's worth about $132,000 now. And about $35,000 of that, give or take, he said, is from the condition of the lakebed. I would like the Commissioners to ask the treasurer or auditor who was ever responsible for these numbers to calculate what the property value losses and what the tax losses are because of this situation. And I think it's going to be fairly surprising. Paul Drury is the one who did, and did my assessment and if that is accurate, $35,000 for 214 homes, that's $7.49 million in property losses from the breach of this lake. And as an example of property tax effects, I used, and I know some neighbors who had their property taxes lowered, including myself, there was an average of about 30% property tax reduction. That 30%, if you, if you look at it-
Karen, 30% in your value or 30% in your actual taxes you paid? You mean your value?
My value.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, but the 30%.
You get people excited, they'll think, "Wow, 30% less property taxes."
Well, it is. It converts out to 30%, yeah, it's assessed value.
Okay, all right then.
So, and I'm telling you, so I calculated out on my own home and that is, that is going to be approximately $87 per year county tax. And then I just, I mean, this is my rough estimate, obviously. If everyone's home is like mine, multiplied by 214 and you get $40,000 a year in county tax, $21,000 a year in township tax, $63,000 a year in school tax. And the total tax would have been $107,000 a year. So this isn't only hurting our properties, but it's also hurting our taxes, our schools. So basically, this weed jungle is costing the county $107,000 a year, according to my estimates. The other losses-
Can I ask you, did all 214 residents get their property values lowered?
No, but I will tell you, within the next two to three weeks, I'm pretty sure they will. That's when, that's when the new, you probably know the new values are coming out and I think that's going to be really informative. The loss, and that is, that's a problem too, because we have a lot of elderly in our neighborhood that wouldn't even consider getting their, you know, knowing how to do that.
Correct.
And also retired folks and whatnot. Other losses, we lost the second entrance to the, to the neighborhood and there's over 200 homes in the neighborhood. The fire chief is concerned about that, but he said, you know, "How are we going to fix it?" He doesn't know.
Can you explain how you lost the entrance?
Well, the, the road and the bridge that are on the dam had to be basically breached so that the dam could be breached. This also reduces home values, not only the tax liability, but when people go to resell their home. And I say that because a neighbor of mine, she's young, her and her husband just had their second child and they realized that they wanted to move out into a larger home. So they bought a piece of property in Grafton and they put their house up for sale. The real estate agent listed it for $125,000 and they thought that that was very reasonable. They got an offer for $120,000. They were really excited. The property appraised at $82,000. They can't sell their house for that. They have more than that on their mortgage. The house is worth a lot more than $82,000. They just didn't put a new kitchen in, they've been doing tile work in the bathroom, they replaced all their windows, their roof. My first proposed step is basically one that Carl Snyder has initiated after I talked to him and that is, he documented the noxious weeds in the lakebed. And obviously, a first step before that would be to talk to the property owner to see what level of cooperation would be, you know, would be had there. But if that doesn't work out, then these weeds are regulated by the Ohio Revised Code and in that code, it gives notice to the owner for five days to cut the weeds. And Carl Snyder put together a, that's one of the things I handed out, the Lorraine Soil and Water District, this is his report. And if you look at it, he also has some photographs, the second page, his recommendations are to basically take those storm sewers and cut, cut ditches so that they all drain into the common, common stream there and also any of these gullies that are holding water to drain them. One problem with draining the gullies is some of them are springs. This was originally advertised as a spring-fed lake and some people have claimed that there, that it was advertised as having more than a dozen springs in there. So you don't always know where the water's going to be, but when you look at the lakebed, you can kind of tell because the Ravenna grass, the reed grass and cattails are growing in the areas that tend to stay wet. And he also, well, he recommended brush hogging it as well and that would keep the rodent population down and the drainage would keep the mosquito population down. He mentioned the spraying as a possibility. Personally, for me, I have chemical sensitivities, I'd have to evacuate the neighborhood if that was to happen, but also that would, that would just detract from the look of it. Carl did mention that if it was mowed, at least it would look like a grassy land rather than a dead land. As far as monies, I had spoken with Don Romancheck from the Stormwater District and he told me that there were possible grant monies available and he asked me to ask the township trustees to apply for some of those grant monies, especially for the storm sewer work and obviously that would also have to be taken through the property owner. And so the question is, why is the situation being ignored? Why isn't the situation being addressed? And there's really two reasons. The first reason we always hear is it's privately owned, but the more pertinent reason is because it's a legacy. Really, the people that are talking in the room today, none of us are the people that were involved when this problem started. The county has different people, the residents are new, I mean, I can see everybody's point of view. Spitzer Hardware, you know, it was the father, in other words, we're in the next generation here. So this is a legacy where everybody needs to work together and the problem's been, everybody's pointing a finger. Mr. Ennis at one time was helping us and I thought we were, you know, we were starting to come together, but then all of a sudden, the ODNR, the ODNR breach order and that really just, you know, everything fell apart. So I wanted to just show you a little bit of Brentwood history so you kind of understand the legacy better. This letter was written by John Spitzer to the U.S. Department of the Interior. The U.S. Department of the Interior was the predecessor to what is ODNR today. I don't see a date on. Now, this is, this is in the 50s. There is a reply to this letter, you'll see the date. Oh, February 20th of 50, okay. In this letter, he says he has approximately 20 acres of land that they wish to turn into a lake. This land is fed by a year-round creek and some springs. Any information that you could forward to us regarding such a project would be greatly The reply, March 2nd in 1950 to Mr. Spitzer, the pertinent information I've highlighted, "It's not clear in your letter as to whether the lake you intend to pound would be 20 acres in area or that your property comprises 20 acres. A 20-acre lake would be a comparatively large one. It might be well to point out that one of the most common and most disastrous mistakes in the building of a small pond or lake is to have too much land area draining into the lake. A large draining area, a drainage area greatly increases the cost of the spillway structure, the rate of sedimentation, and the cost of maintaining the pond in good condition. And this has proved." The lake was built anyway and some of the original residents said this was never reported to them. However, the lake property was never turned over to the residents either, so it wasn't their responsibility. In the beginning, at least five Spitzer families lived in Brentwood at one time and at least 15 homes were owned by Spitzer Hardware. It was them, it was their attorneys, it was their employees that lived in the homes. In fact, some of the smaller two-bedroom homes, 1,200 square foot homes, were actually built for the, for employees. This is a, a portion of a sales brochure that shows that the, discusses the spring-fed waters and that the lake is exclusively yours in Brentwood Lake Village. So this was actually sold as a lake community. It's interesting to note that on Waterfall Drive, there is one home that I believe it was Stuart Spitzer lived in, 14 Waterfall Drive. That property was actually a single lot that also contained the lake parcel. And that parcel, which is basically another, another point that points out that it was never intended to turn the lake over to a homeowners' association. In 1999, the Spitzer Organization wanted to sell that home. Actually, they had wanted to sell it for quite a while. It was, it was for sale for a while and no one knew that the lake was part of the parcel. So at that time, Spitzer representatives approached our homeowners' association, which is actually a, or was a social organization. It was never formed by the developer, it was formed by residents as, as a social organization. She approached them because they wanted to sell the home and they realized that the people that were going to buy the home were not going to take the lake as well. So they wanted to survey the lake out of the home parcel and also wanted to get rid of the lake. And they asked our, quote, "homeowners' association" if we could take it. Well, at the time, we said, you know, "The liability is the dam and the bridge and all that and we really couldn't afford it because, you know, we don't have any money stream except contributions." But we, but we also talked with the county and at that time, the county was willing to take the dam, the spillway, the road, the bridge and that made it possible that we had decided that, you know, if this was going to happen, that our homeowners' association would take the lake. We didn't think it would be a big liability to raise money for that. But what happened was- But what happened was, um, there was a request from the county that the trees be cut down off of the dam, and also that because we wouldn't take the parcel as a whole parcel, that area had to be surveyed out. And, um, money, it, it, at that time, did not want to be spent by the Spitzer Organization to do that, and also, our president, um, gave them the idea that, well, if you surveyed the house out of the rest of the parcel, it would cost a lot less. So they surveyed the house out of the parcel and left the parcel behind. And that was the ends of the discussions. So in nineteen ninety-nine, um, you can see, this is the actual deed transfer for the separation of those parcels. You can see Mr. Giardini's signature and Mr. Spitzer's signature, and you can also see that it was approved by the Lorraine County Planning Commission. But now that property was untethered, and it, and its tax liability is fifty-six dollars a year. And it's, I believe it's just under sixteen acres. Then all of a sudden, we had a problem in two thousand and six. I think the problem actually started in two thousand and five. The dam started leaking, and, um, as we typically did, called Spitzer Hardware, and, um, they said, they decided to call a meeting to talk to residents, and they said, "Well, uh, we want to fix the problem, and we want to fix it permanently, but we're not going to fix it unless you take the property, and we're not going to talk to you unless you're actually a legal entity, so we want you to form a homeowners' association." And residents balked for a couple of reasons. First off, the job of forming a homeowners' association is an afterthought. To chide people's deeds to something, especially something that's a liability, is near impossible. I mean, some people were in support of it. We usually had about thirty percent of the residents supporting it, and other people, you know, they don't like it when you knock on their door and ask for money, and they didn't, they, people are more closed today than they used to be. So, um, residents were concerned about that, but residents were also concerned about, "Well, if we become a legal entity, um, and we're dealing with this lawyer who is representing Spitzer, is this problem going to be shoved off onto us?" So residents voiced their concerns at a meeting called by, um, Kathy Schuster at the library, and it was just lakefront people invited. And, um, Mr. Giardini said that he could not give us anything that we would not take. And, um, Kathy Schuster at the time also threatened that, well, she would fix the lake, you know, if we didn't cooperate, she would fix the lake, and we wouldn't like it, because they'd end up breaching it. So at that meeting, we decided our only recourse was to incorporate our current social organization, so that at least we were a legal entity, um, to discuss what we could do. And it was around that time, we also, um, started talking with the county, I believe. So at that point, residents were fighting for their home values, their primary asset, asset, on an unlevel playing field, because we didn't have the resources for the legal counsel that the property owner has, or the county. We were crippled by not having a homeowners' association tied to the deed, and our social homeowners' association was now a legal entity, but we still couldn't hold property. In June, w- we were having talks with the county at that time, and there was, um, we were coming together with an idea for a plan, and we were willing, as the homeowners' association, to, to take a ditch petition, I guess we were discussing at that time, around to residents, um, to have them sign on to do a hundred-dollar-a-year, um, contribution. Um, the problem still was that there was no entity to take ownership of the properties. So in June two thousand and nine, when we were in the midst of this, ODNR inspected the dam and ordered the immediate breach. At that time, Mr. Giardini, representing Spitzer, wrote a fax to, um, David Hanselman, who is the acting chief of, of the Division of Water and Division of Soil Conservation of ODNR. And I highlighted certain areas here. At the time, they issued the order to Spitzer Management, who technically was not the owner. It was Spitzer Hardware. So Mr. Giardini responded, "Spitzer Management is not now nor has it ever been the owner of Brentwood Lake Dam. The dam was constructed in the fifties as part of the Brentwood Lake development. The lake and dam were turned over to the Brentwood Lake Association, and the roadway has been a public roadway since that time. Your order would be more appropriately directed to the Brentwood Homeowners' Association, since they are the true owners of the lake and dam." So at that point, our worst fears were realized. We were just had, I mean, we were told that if we formed this association, that nobody, that he couldn't dump this property on us, and that's what was happening.
Who gave you that advice, Karen?
Um, several entities actually supported us in that. Uh, Mr. Giardini gave us that advice. We also, um, the, the, um, the county supported us in the effort, the township supported us in the effort. Um, it looked like it was only up and up. It looked like it was a good idea to become a legal entity and to move forward, to become a homeowners' association, with the intent of, of someday tying it to the deed and taking ownership of the property that really should have been done to begin with. So in December two thousand and nine, the state of Ohio sued Spitzer Hardware for the immediate breach of the dam. And Spitzer Hardware, I, I don't really understand lawsuits, but Spitzer Hardware turned around, and I don't know if they sued the township and county and the homeowners' association, or they talked the state into adding us to the suit. Mr. Ennis, can you explain that to me?
Uh, I think we were all included in the original lawsuit by the state, if I recall.
Um, well, I, I, I will, let me see. I have it right here. I'll, I'll read it to you, and you can explain it to me. "The state of Ohio has filed a complaint in this action to remedy defendant Spitzer's violations of Ohio's dam safety laws and rules, and to protect public health, safety, and welfare. Defendant Spitzer has since filed a third-party complaint to add the Carlisle Township Board of Trustees, the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, and the Brentwood Lake Village Homeowners' Association as third-party defendants. Defendant Spitzer, as third-party plaintiff, asserts that these entities are responsible for the dam's remediation based on theories of adverse possession and public road dedication." So based on that, what part of the lawsuit were we in?
Okay. ODNR had sued Spitzer, and then Spitzer named the county, the township, and the association.
So does that mean that we were being sued by Spitzer?
Yes.
Okay.
Prior to this, ODNR had cited him twice, every five years.
Sir, you have to come up to the mic from when you're going to speak, though, so they pick it up on the thing. And tell us who you are.
Gordon Soy, forty-three Lakeview in Grafton. Uh, prior to this, two thousand and nine, ODNR had cited Spitzer twice to have the, the dam and their spillways repaired. And I know, I saw those letters, and I turned them over to them. I saw both of them, turned them over to them. Apparently, nothing happened there, because all of a sudden, this happened.
And at this time also, I, I want you to note, again, the homeowners' association didn't represent anybody. I mean, it's kind of like if you decide to form a club, and you decide that all of your friends are in the club without your friends actually agreeing to being in the club, because that's the way the club was formed. They just said, in the original articles of incorporation, it was like, "Everybody's in the club." So this epitomizes our struggle. Um, this is, um, an excerpt from our Code of Regulations at the top here, and you can see the purpose. "The purpose of our homeowners' association shall, the purpose of this organization shall be to protect the interests of the property owners owning property within the confines of Brentwood Lake Village, as it now exists," which actually had the lake in the parcel of Fourteen Waterfall, "and further to promote the civic and social efforts of the members and the doing of any and all other things necessary or incidental thereto." In, um, Mr. Giardini's brief, Spitzer Hardware contended, on or around June eleventh, nineteen fifty-eight, which was when the homeowners' association was formed. "The third-party defendant, Brentwood Lake Homeowners' Association, was formed for the sole purpose of taking ownership and control over the common areas within Brentwood Lake Village, including Brentwood Lake and Dam. Spitzer also contended that since that time and continuously thereafter to present, the Brentwood Lake Homeowners' Association assumed dominion and control over Brentwood Lake and Dam by financing the area, posting signs prohibiting the public from entering upon the Brentwood Lake, except for members of the Brentwood Lake Homeowners' Association. Since that time also, the association has continuously used Brentwood Lake and the dam for recreational purposes, has maintained the lake and surrounding areas, and has barred others from doing so." Notice the date, nineteen fifty-eight. This is dated August twenty-fifth, nineteen fifty-eight. This is a letter from John Spitzer, um, of Spitzer Hardware, to Mr. Johnson, who is the president of the homeowners' association. "Dear Mr. Johnson, permission is hereby granted to enforce the no trespassing signs on the beach area, as well as, as other points on the lake, as is deemed advisable by the association, and for the betterment and improvement of all Brentwood property owners. In regards to the control of operation and use of boats on the lake, it is suggested that a workable program be developed instructing the use of such boats. In view of the fact that many property owners in Brentwood do own and operate boats, it is suggested that a representative body of this group participate in the establishment of this program. The cooperation and spirit of the association is very commendable, and can do much that there will to the maintenance of the investment and improvement, and improve the enjoyment of all who live in Brentwood Lake Village." It's very different than what was claimed in the brief. The result of this lawsuit, and actually, we really look at this lawsuit as a frivolous lawsuit, because we were not an entity that should have even been brought into it, um, and we didn't have the money to have a lawyer. We ended up losing, a- and one other thing, since we were a legal entity, we could not defend ourselves. When you're a corporation in Ohio, you're required to hire an attorney to defend yourself. So we spent between, oh, and I didn't, the other thing I didn't tell you is that we were in the process at that time of putting together a homeowners' association that was actually tied to the deed. Mr. Spitzer, um, uh, Mr. Giardini said that Mr. Spitzer would be the first home to sign on to that association. Mr. Spitzer was notified, Mr. Spitzer never signed. I would, I, I believe it was over eighty homes signed that, it, when the, um, when the lawsuit hit us, and that stopped everything.
Karen, I have a question. What happened to the homeowners' association referred to in nineteen fifty-eight?
Um, that just went defunct, because it went bust, basically, and, and all morale was, was... No, but that's the one that currently is, is lingering, if you would will, but it's inactive right now.
Okay. It's because it was referred to nineteen fifty-eight. I wonder what happened to that one?
No. No, it's still, if anybody wants to jump in, but i- it is not incorporated anymore. The, i- it, it was ro- not renewed when the renewal came up.
Who owned the property? Who was paying taxes on the property?
Spitzer Hardware and Supply.
Yeah, the assessed value of the lake is like thirty-five hundred dollars for fifteen-point-two-one acres.
Yes. Um, they also own the park, which is, um, basically the access to that, and that has a higher assessed value. I think there's, I haven't looked recently, but it's like three or four hundred dollar tax liability, I believe. So anyway, the result of the lawsuit was that the, the dam, and I'm not really sure how this happened, but the dam was breached with taxpayer money, as far as the labor. And we finally know that the entity paying taxes on the lake parcel is the actual owner. The homeowners' association, um, was forced to agree to breach the dam without resident input, and I'm pointing that out because, from what I understand from those that were at the, at the meeting, representing the homeowners' association, was there was a point in time when they were offered that if you could come up with fifty thousand dollars, we'll breach this in such a way as it could be put back. There was no way to commit any money, and that offer was not taken to residents at all. The decision was made by a group that didn't represent the residents, and that group should need, I mean, the group should have been called the Girl Scouts, and, and then it would have maybe not made sense to have been there, but that's basically what it, what it was. So anyway, we ended up losing the lake, losing the homeowners' association, losing our property values. We lost twelve thousand dollars in needless legal fees, and we're concerned that now we're going to lose the park. The park is being paid out of whatever remaining money we have, and as soon as, as far as mowing, and as soon as that's done, it's, no one's going to maintain it. Um, when this was happening, homeowners warned everybody what was coming. I mean, we knew this was going to turn into a disaster. We contacted congresspeople. We told, you know, the local government. We told basically everybody, but, um, and this is basically what it looks like now. And one thing that the county, um, an aspect that the county was involved in is that the roadway and bridge over the dam were dedicated in nineteen fifty-nine. Um, this is the actual dedication, this is the res- and this is the resolution number for the, um, for the commissioners, and next to it is Carlisle Township's receipt of that. We also have it in our minutes from the homeowners' association that that, um, actually did go through. Again, this is another legacy, because in current time, for whatever reason, I don't know when it stopped, but the maintenance had stopped on that, and at one point, I had talked to Mr. Ennis, and he said that the, uh, that the county and township did not recognize the dedication. But I actually found this dedication. I spent a week, every afternoon, over in that records building until I found this. And the sad part is, it wasn't used to help us. It was used to help Spitzer basically turn the thing around and try to sue the county. And without this, the county may not have been drawn into the lawsuit. So I feel like us doing our due diligence didn't do anything for us. And I'd also like to point out that if, as that legacy, if, going back in time, if that roadway and bridge were maintained as they should have been in this county, there would have been a roadway and bridge that the county would have wanted to defend. I don't think that they would have caved in and breached that dam so easily if there was a, a, a bridge that was worth, I don't know, quarter of a million dollars? And also, another thing is, in the nineteen eighties, the state of Ohio widened the inlet to the dam, and the county and cleaned, cleaned and widened the ditches, increasing stormwater flow into the lake, and more of a burden on that, on the dam and on the spillway. And that's part of the reason why ODNR found them to be too small and inadequate anyway. I mean, they were, they were leaking, they were degraded, but they were also too small. We do have this information in our records, and also, I did find a commissioner resolution where the commissioners were involved in, um, in that ditch, that dish, ditch, ditch issue, if I can say that. Um, but for some reason, it just kind of stopped. I mean, I couldn't find anything that went on. It was, it was requesting a study, and then the ditches were widened, and there wasn't much discussion after that. So here we are today. Um, nobody really wants to do anything, and it's become a really big problem. I was looking at creative long-term solutions. The short-term solution really is something can be done as far as speaking with the property owner to get the noxious weeds cut, or that issue can be pushed according to the Ohio Revised Code. The, um, initial drainage issues, getting that water into the central stream, it's possible, um, the Don Romancik with the stormwater drainage. And actually, everybody's property, I believe there's stormwater drainage laws, that your property has to be graded in a certain way so that the stormwater sheds properly. That really applies to that properly. But also, if we did something for the long term, I don't know if it would be restoring the lake. I don't know if it would be something like a wetlands restoration. I know it's a challenge to find someone that will help with grant monies when it's a private piece of property, so I don't really see if, if we would get grant monies, that it being a private piece of property. And I guess that's why I'm here, to talk to, um, the commissioners and ask if you would assist with the township, with, um, Stormwater District, initially to address the short-term health issues, and the long term to address, is there a pro- is there a way, a means, that some entity might come available that we can, even the metro parks, and I will tell you, I talked to the metro parks two years ago. They were receptive, but at the time, the issue was very volatile, because it had just happened. They wanted things to settle, and they don't, they, because they don't want to walk into a war. But they, at that time, and I don't know, you know, the economic climate's changed. I don't know if there is a way to do anything now, but, um, at that time, they were receptive. And that would make it so that it would bring the property values up, it would make it a source of pride in the middle of the neighborhood, um, and just, and also bring the tax values up. I, uh, I mean, it's a win-win situation. If our property values go up, we get our asset back, and you also get your tax base back. And I want to take you back to where we were when this all fell apart. At the time, we were looking at using County Issue Two money, I believe it's called, for the roadway and bridge. The homeowners were looking at a 30-year, $100 per year, zero-interest loan using the ditch petition, and Spitzer was going to pay the interest on the 0% loan. And we couldn't touch the property unless we took ownership of it.
Is Spitzer willing to, is, right here, is Spitzer willing to?
Oh, I was like, why did I think you were behind me? Probably the speaker.
Maybe the speaker back there. Is Spitzer willing to sell the property to you? Have you asked him that?
I have not asked him that. Well, I haven't personally asked him that, because I don't want to buy the property, but no.
I mean, the homeowners' association as a whole?
Well, the homeowners' association isn't active anymore. It really just fell apart.
Right, it's not a real homeowners' association. It's referred to, but it's not.
But it's not even referred to that anymore. There have not been any meetings in over a couple of years. The whole thing fell apart, and morale just went, I mean, that's basically what happened, and nobody wanted to do anything. Nobody's going to contribute, because there's nothing to contribute to.
I was just thinking about the N-RAC dollars. It's to purchase property, to restore property. We have like 1.5 million for District Nine available to us for purchasing.
That normally has to have an economic development value to it under the N-RAC.
It's my opinion that if the noxious weed issue were pressed, and the drainage were actually required to be done as everybody else's property, that Mr. Spitzer may find that that costs more than he's willing to spend. And it may be that the organization is willing to donate the land. It may not, I would not approach on a purchase.
So they don't end it, Karen? They may be willing to donate it, but to who, though?
I would look in the metro parks first.
It would have to be an entity where they're going to get a tax deduction from, if they're not going to donate it to the homeowners' association, I doubt that.
And then the land would have to be held for three years thereafter, or it'd be IRS.
Well, I will tell you that several times, they tried to give it to us.
Well, they may give it, they may have tried to give it to you strategically, speaking with a couple of the commissioners, maybe they are willing still, maybe not, but clearly they can, they can make a donation to a public entity and take a significant tax position with that, and that may generate, for them, some revenue to participate in further reconstruction of the property.
The problem, Jim, the value of the property is only worth $3,500 bucks.
Well, that's what the orders say. Habitually, it never ceases to amaze me that something's worth $3,500, and then sells for $900,000, and somebody builds on it. So I'm certain that they could probably obtain a favorable appraisal of what the value to the public would be of the land in certain conditions, and then take a tax, or if that, we've been through that with folks before. If they were able, if they needed a tax write-off, or could gain a favorable tax position, again, that's saying if they need the tax write-off, because you write that off against something else, they may see some profit from that, and that profit may induce them to do some work with the donating of the property back to us. So I mean, it's just one potential area that could be explored to generate some additional revenue to work on that. The other way is something we, I talked to Commissioner Williams about yesterday, would be to, if the taxes returned back to what they were before, you talk about a tax loss. If the entities that were receiving those taxes would agree to divert those tax proceeds for a number of years, that they're not receiving now, because the valuation has dropped, towards restoring that area, and thereafter, over a period certain, they would start receiving the benefit of the increased taxes.
Talking about a modified TIP of some sort?
Some TIP, I didn't say TIP, because I don't think the area is...
I know you did, it's not legally, but I mean...
But I'm talking TIP terms, very similar, and I don't, again, I have to vet out the legality, but...
Well, that's why I asked her if all 200 homes, but there's only a small amount of homes.
It would take all 200 homes to be able to do anything back there.
But all 200 homes have not had the decrease in property value, mostly the ones have gone to the board revisions.
Well, there may be enough of them, but it would take capturing a large enough geographical region, probably, to make some economic sense of this. The ones that have gone to the board revision clearly are easy to identify, but the community without the lake and with the significant problems up front is probably going to be a community in decline for a while, unless something's done. So even the folks that are not directly on the lake have some economic incentive to participate in restoring that area of the community. So those tax dollars were used to restore that for a time certain, then everybody thereafter that time period would receive benefit of an increased tax base. That would take some considerable work and collaboration with a lot of entities, because recognizing most of those taxes go to the schools. They don't go to the county or the township. The bulk of them will go to levy activities in the school districts. I won't say that they're not willing partners, but this would be a little unusual, but it would take some legwork. I think we can build a consensus on some of that, even if there's a partial split of those revenues to deal with that. As far as being able to develop the funding necessary due to repair, you know, clearly we have mechanisms of raising that money, as long as we can generate a revenue stream to pay the debt service in that money. The one thing I heard earlier, though, was that, about the road, I think I need to clarify that that's not a county road. The, I've been informed by council that that is, in fact, a township road.
It's a township road, but a county bridge, and the bridge is the bigger part of the cost.
The, is Mr. Carney here at all?
No.
Okay. I'm just talking about the road, the roadway. I remember that when Mr. Carney actually was participating, helping to breach the dam, so it didn't cost that $50,000 to do the work there.
Excuse me, do you know what it did cost? We've asked that. We don't know what it cost us.
I really don't. I remember, you know, Karen, I've been thinking while you were talking about all the things that went on over a number of years. I know they did a V-cut in the dam to slowly drain the lake, so that it wasn't a very expensive process, and I believe Ken used his equipment and folks to do that, so the costs were probably marginal and negligible, because he probably just brought in his equipment to do that.
It took two months.
I don't know, probably, they kept taking it deeper and deeper, so that they slowly drained the water from the lake down there. I don't know the specifics, but I do remember, and you were shaking your head, yes, just standing here, it was like a V-cut, it's something they did. They talked, it was outside my realm of understanding, it was an engineering thing. There's partial solutions that can be found by how we redirect some of those things, and of course, if the homeowners were to look at their HOA from a standpoint of having to participate economically, I live in an area that has an HOA, and my HOA fee is $500 a year for the HOA. If you have unwilling homeowners that want to participate economically in HOA, it's almost impossible to have an HOA as a social organization, and to spend money on your community to keep it as vibrant as it was when you moved in. And that's going to be a challenge, because if you had an HOA that was up and actively running, a majority of the homeowners, a simple majority, if the bylaws were so written, could in fact decide things for the whole community and make some tough decisions. Now, that's not going to make you the most popular person in the world, just look at these three up here, but they certainly could provide that leadership. Without a really strong functioning HOA that has the ability to charge an HOA fee, it's going to be hard for you to generate a revenue stream to participate economically.
I would say it would be impossible, and that's why Mr. Ennis had suggested the drainage petition, and I believe we had the support of the commissioners on that.
The, one of the things I didn't hear in your presentation, but I heard yesterday, was that the area, the stream bed, is not returning to a natural flow state very quickly, and that the water's tending to spread out rather than to drain. That's something we could look at in the Stormwater District, to see what's going on with that stream bed, with regard to possibly channeling that ditch better, maybe making it a little bit deeper and feathering it out, so that more of the water drains.
You modify the water flow, which is not unusual.
Right. We wouldn't be doing anything to the lake bed, and we would have to get the agreement of the owner of the property to do that, because we just can't go on somebody's private property. And right now, there's no real flooding issues. I would say that if there was an issue with flooding, you could use the petition process. In the petition process, when it comes to ditch maintenance and cleaning, it only takes one person in the watershed to file a petition, and that can be accepted and agreed to, and then work can be done, even if the homeowner doesn't agree to it. So, I mean, the ditch maintenance petition is a process that can be utilized, but there has to be, council probably can, is better, that has to be some kind of underlying problem to use that petition process.
Well, this one was complicated, because we wanted to get Public Works money. In order to get Public Works money, we had to put project in the name of the county. The county was going to go ahead and borrow the loan, and then, as indicated in here, had a very minimum repayment from the residents. The problem is, is the county had to have some kind of assurance that we were going to get enough people on board to pay that, before it went out and borrowed that money and did it. We spent two, two and a half years trying to work out a resolution on this thing. We met many evenings, and I know on weekends, and I don't mean to be lecturing to this group, because as I was about to say, I recognize many of the faces out there. These are the same people that cared enough to participate in those meetings and try to do something. But, you know, Karen, if you think about what you just read to us, every time you talked about something, and it involved the residents as a whole doing something, you said, and the residents couldn't do that, and the residents couldn't do that. You know, there were like 300 residents, and I remember, we went all around, trying to get everybody together on that Saturday night, and I think we had 60, 70 people show up. We had a plan for saving the dam that was affordable, it was doable, but we can't do it with just us and a few of you cooperating. You know, this is the first I've heard about the flow not going correctly, and like Jim says, maybe there is something we can do there, but somehow, we have to get the residents motivated to participate in it. That plan we had worked out, like you said, involved $100 a year. That's a fraction of what most people pay for a homeowners' association, that's probably less than people that have their own private swimming pool to maintain it. I mean, I just, I get a little worked up, because I think the county and the township did, you know, I know Barry Taylor, and Linda Jacobs, and Bill Holzman, and I were all in those meetings, they all participated. Now, I believe we stood on our heads to try and come up with a solution, try and help the residents, and we're still willing to do that, but from my end, my staff is cut. I don't have the staff and the time to devote to more wild goose chases. We need to have some assurance that the residents are going to join forces with us, and not just a small group of you. That's the same problem we've had throughout it. But, you know, we can, we can do the ditch petition, or the stormwater stuff, but I disagree with you that the road was dedicated. I looked behind that paperwork, and what happened is, somebody walked in with a letter to the, and we're talking about. The other problem with this is, like you said, we're going back to the 1950s, and this is just like the loain thing we had a couple of weeks ago. You know, we have a problem that has generated for, you know, 50, 60 years here, and people want to figure out solutions, and the only real way to figure out a solution is to go through a complicated lawsuit, which we all tried to avoid. But we can look at this, but it is, like I said, it's going to take some cooperation from everybody, and, oh, I started to say, I don't think that property is dedicated, because it really wasn't, I know you have the paper resolution, but it wasn't done correct. It was just, it appeared that somebody walked in and handed the commissioners a piece of paper and said, "Vote on this," and that's not how you dedicate a road, Karen. So I respectfully disagree that the road was never dedicated, but, you know, the other problem is, as you said, we don't even know who owns the place right now. I didn't, I couldn't see that deed that you put up real well.
It's Spitzer Hardware and Company, still owns it. I checked it, they're still paying taxes on it. Could I speak? I understand your concerns, Mr. Ennis. I share your concerns as far as getting resident involvement, and I personally am tuckered out, talking to residents.
Well, I know, I mean, you and I are both frustrated, and like I said, I know there's several people out there that have spent hours of their time to try to do something.
But that's why I started looking in different directions, and I don't know who can look into this. I don't know who has the expertise, but I do know, in talking to someone like Don Romancik, that there is a constructed wetland in Loraine. I don't know if any of you are familiar with it. It's like, he considers it a teacup type of thing, where one pool spills into the next.
You know, clearly, there can be some things done there. Developers are usually looking for, and mainly work with metro parks, to reconstruct wetland when they want to deconstruct wetland. There's a formula used to do that. Normally, you have to increase the acreage of wetlands, I think it's three to one, or...
Right, versus what you're currently, what you want.
What you're doing, and that's a good way of working with developers, and it's been very successful for metro parks for returning, say, farm land to a more natural state. There was a lot of that done out in, at the Carlisle Reservation, and other plots out in Huntington Township. If that was what the neighborhood's desire was, I, again, as I stated earlier, I believe that we may find a willing person or corporation with the land to move the land to a different ownership, and especially in light of I can possibly explain some favorable tax consequences of doing so. But there has to be a clear line of sight to what's going to be done with it, before somebody's going to be willing to step in, take that ownership, and then be the recipient of discontentment by folks. So I think that, I think somehow, there has to be a general consensus that if it's not going to return to a lake because of the extreme cost, what's going to be, what's the final disposition of the land that's going to be agreeable? Not that we end up, say, for instance, the county took ownership of the land, or even the Port Authority, or wherever we wanted to pocket, if we could work with the owner. We don't want to become the people now that you're upset with. I'd rather you be upset with Spitzer Management than us.
Spitzer Hardware.
But that said, and I say that in a little bit of jest, yes, I know we want to work with you, but is it, would it be a satisfying experience for the folks that are most aggressively pursuing this issue, if it turned into a more natural preserve wetland area? I think that that potentiality is real, and I think that can be done, especially...
But I think that's a, I'd interrupt you, Jim, that's a long-term issue. The short-term issue is somehow getting it all mowed down and leveling it out, to not have the swales, correct? I like to take things incrementally, I just...
Correct. It has to be for safeties and health reasons right now. That's out of control.
It doesn't matter, social funding for that, Karen, I mean, actually mechanically getting it done, okay? Whatever reason you want to put behind it, it's fine. But we need to, that's the immediate issue, is the cutting it, getting rid of the noxious weeds.
Yes.
Well, if you go back to a marshland, I need to make this clear, if you go back to a marshland environment, you're going to get those weeds. They're going to be there. I know there, this is, you can't restore something to a natural state and then, you know, fertilize out the things that they want and don't want. It's going to happen. The things that are going to grow there are growing naturally, and you can mow them down and bushwhack them down, and frankly, in a month and a half, Mother Nature will take care of most of that for you, when the first freezes come, but they'll be back next spring.
Correct.
And... spring. And so that's why I'm saying, if it has to be an understanding that when it returns to a natural state, under the regulations, that program may be used for, you're going to, you're going to have an inability to deal with anything that grows there in the future, because that'll fall under a different set of guidances that will require the land to be left alone, except for if there's an issue with a draining property for flooding potentiality.
Well, that's why I was thinking that maybe we should look, I really think the land needs to be analyzed. I think that we need to know where the springs are. I think that we need to know what it can look like because that there, even if it is a wetland, we don't really know, but we're pretty sure there's springs. It was advertised as springs in the beginning. When we used to go out and ice skate on it, there were certain areas you couldn't go on because they were percolating all the time.
Yeah, I think the potential for springs there makes it a more attractive area for somebody that want to restore wetlands that they've built on. The springs make it easier for them to restore a wetland. Sometimes it's challenging to find areas that are suitable for wetland transfer, and the springs, I think, would be a natural draw to do that. But with the springs there, again, this takes it to a higher level of control. They're going to want those springs to percolate freely, to develop the area into a sanctuary marshland, and that, you may not want that marshland in your backyard.
Right, now you talk about the mosquito issues and the water and everything else. So I mean, not to argue, Ms. Cortez, it's a good idea, but I don't think that's the end result the residents are looking for, to have a wetlands in their backyard.
I think you're looking for another park like you have on the other side, maybe.
Well, actually, in talking to Don Romancik and those that were talking about wetlands, he said it's a mistaken idea that wetlands harbor mosquitoes. He said a healthy wetland will not harbor mosquitoes because there's fish and all these things that, and it's flowing. The lake really was not that bad. I mean, huge body of water. I mean, we had some mosquitoes, but they came out at dusk.
But I think our issue, Karen, not to stop you though, the ODNR came in and asked us to breach it, and they're trying to do that around the state of Ohio, is to breach those dams.
They don't want those dams.
They don't want those dams. So to reestablish it as a lake, I don't think that is, in the purview of Finnish, I think it's somehow addressing the property as is. I don't see anyone giving us the ability to remake it a lake unless it were a Metro Park entity of some sort.
Well, it'd be interesting to see if ODNR would reissue permit to redamp the lake.
Right, that's issue, because they did state, and I remember this clearly, they wanted dams like that breached around, and we talked about this morning, right, Doc? That was one of the entities, getting rid of those breached, about breaching those dams, they didn't want them dammed off. So I don't think making a consideration of making it a new lake would be a short-term fix to any of the issues you're talking about, the noxious weeds and everything else.
Oh, it would not be a short-term fix, no.
Right, that would be a long-term.
What if the, what if the land was taken, was donated, and to whatever mechanism that was most productive to move title to the land if that was possible, would your, would you, would the homeowners be willing to, you know, relook at the HOA issue? We can, I think we could deal with the, with the stream bed fairly simply, and then the HOA would take the land, and they would, you know, keep it in a state that was suitable to the landowners out there, whether it becomes a parkland or it becomes whatever it's going to become.
A community garden, 15 acres? You said you did organic gardening, I mean.
I think, I think if you move off the issue of restoring a lake, then you move into a whole nother set of discussions about what the outcome could be. If the priority is still to potentially go back to, which I thought was absolutely beautiful in your pictures, that lake, then I think those other discussions can't really materialize productively, because they're going to be inhibited by a desire to put the lake back. And you can't be having both of those discussions at the same time, because they're mutually exclusive.
Actually, there's a third discussion, and that is, there's a compromise in the middle. And that is what I'm talking about as far as a wetland remediation. That's why I talked about the teacup idea. Don Romancik actually brought it up to me, that it could be a long-term remediation, and that is, there could be water there, but there would not be the size of the dam, and so ODNR wouldn't even have to regulate the dam, because what you'd have is a series of small dams that where one pool would flow into another pool. And so you'd have water, and an entity would find this desirable. There are wetlands credits that could be had, and it doesn't have to be the county or whatever that holds the property. I really think that someone like Western Reserve, Nature Conservancy, the Metro Parks might be willing to step into that. Army Corps of Engineers also has grant monies for something like that. Don Romancik said he had grant monies for something like that possibly.
Well, I don't know why Don's telling those things. Don works for me, okay, and I work for this board, okay? So, Don was here earlier, but he's not here now, so I'd like to know what grant money he thinks he has to give you folks, because I certainly would support that.
As would we.
The way she's, I think he was talking, maybe other organizations have it.
Stormwater District.
No, not the district, I think he's talking other, and she said the Army Corps, not us in particular, or Stormwater.
Right, he was saying, yes, he was saying for the short-term, for, the short-term fix for the water flow issues, that he felt that if the trustees wrote up a grant, and I don't know since you're his boss.
Well, the trustee, what he's talking about is stormwater district funds, and the grants are very limited and narrow in scope. That's why I was talking earlier about the potential for dealing with the stream bed and working on the stream bed. As far as restoration of the area, those funds are not, are not broad enough in scope to be able to, to deal with bigger issues than that. And this would be a challenging grant application, because there really is no stormwater drainage problem that's affecting homeowners and backing water up into homes and so forth, and that's really where you try to deal with the stormwater. But I think it can be stretched the definition a bit. As far as all those other things, it usually takes years, if not decades, to do the type of mitigation that you're talking about with the stepping system and the water pools coming down. And you're right, the property can go to any, you know, governmental subdivision of the state of Ohio with the same tax consequences or benefits that the county could do. I was only mentioning the county to hasten the process. But you also have to find, you know, a willing developer, and you're right, the tax credits are available, but there's not a lot of development going on right now, and there's not a lot of people chasing those things right now, because, you know, the economy still is in a state of suspended animation. And so it may be a while. Plus, 16 acres is a fairly large parcel to be dealing with, and usually they deal with a couple acres at a time. So you could have a project that's going to take a lot of years to fully develop, and you folks are probably looking for a solution that's a little faster than that.
Right, but I will say, every time I see the lake being quoted in size, it gets smaller. When Carl was out...
Excuse me, Karen, the parcel says 15.21 acres. I mean, that's from the auditors. It's a 15.21 acres.
Right, but I think I know why. Carl Snyder pointed 11 acres, and that's because on the other side of the road over by the sewer treatment plant, that land's part of the parcel. So that land is not part of the lake. And I think that the actual pooling area is 11 acres. However, there's a main pooling area, and then there's an inlet area, and, you know, I mean, it could even be a balance. That's why I said, I think someone needs to look at it, because it could be that some areas turn to grassy land or a walking trail, and other areas were like several pools or some, you know, I mean, I don't know what it could turn into. It doesn't mean that the whole thing has to be water or the whole thing has to be mitigated or whatnot. The other idea I have is, I think in a few weeks, you're going to, when the reassessment of the houses comes in, there is going to be such a drop in Brentwood that you're going to see how much money that you might have available, and even more than that as far as tax recoupation money. Because from the people that I'm talking to, I've seen houses selling in the 40s to $60,000 range in Brentwood, and that's why it's pulling peoples that are hundreds some thousand dollars down to eighty some thousand dollars. I mean, it's really bad. And that's the other reason why, is if there is a way for another entity to own the, to own the lake area or that piece of property and improve it, and I also heard something about, in Monday night's meeting, there's new blight funds or funds for...
Well, the blight funds, there's several pools of resources there, but unfortunately, rebuilding a lake or an area wouldn't be one of those uses for those type of funds. And we just received grants for a lot of demolition of abandoned, delinquent properties, while the values have decreased back there. The area is not experiencing abandonment of homes that become a hazard to the neighborhood, et cetera. So right now, it wouldn't fall within the scope of those funds. And those are handled for homeowner demolition or property rehabilitation, but not lake rehabilitation.
I see. A couple other points I'd like to make, and that is, I don't know if anybody studied the hydrological effects on the, on Elyria and the water they're receiving. We did notice that when there was a lot of water last year, that Elyria seemed to be flooding a lot, not this year because we had a drought, but last year. And it used to be that our lake became a portion of a retention basin for Elyria, and I think if you looked into that, it's possible if Elyria is receiving too much water and it's contributing to the flooding, you may be able to invoke the ditch, the drainage petition to mitigate that.
Well, it would take the homeowners to do the petition, not us. We received the petition, but we don't...
Okay, now, would it be the homeowners of Elyria that would do it to...
It has to be somebody in the watershed area. And actually, later this afternoon or tomorrow, I'll get you that information, and Teresa has all of the petition processes and things that we've used. We've sent it out to quite a few homeowners. Normally, there's one or two that are affected that want to do something, and then there's usually one or two that don't want to do anything, and it ends up in a neighborly dispute. The regulations are written in such a manner that I can't prevent a repair to an area that's flooding me, just simply because my neighbor doesn't like me and doesn't care that the water backs up under my property. But if it's a retention area, that may give some insight. I don't know if it's a retention area. That's something that would have to be looked at from an engineering standpoint.
It used to be, we witnessed the retention capabilities of the lake, because the spillways only sized a certain amount, and there would, through evaporation, the lake would actually go down.
Yeah, the only problem with putting, putting a, if we were to look at that and it was justifiable as a retention area, those things are made to temporarily have water and then, and then drain.
Is that retention or detention?
That's retention. Detention would be a lake. Retention would be, would be, you know, we're temporary, we slow it down, and then it would, it would naturally drain off a lot slower. So, you know, it's, that may not solve your problem either, because those areas become a little bit challenging on maintenance, too. I know like out in North Ridgefield, they have, they have huge ones, huge, and they're several feet deep, and normally there's not much going through them, and even on a light rain, it may be just trickling through the center, and usually there's a concrete center and outfalls to them. But during a very, very heavy rain, they may fill up with six to eight feet of water for several hours while it slows the flow out and back down, and then in a day or so, they're dry again.
Okay, so I guess we were, had a detention basin then. But also, that again, would take, putting the dam back in again, and that might not be, might not help. Another issue that I didn't bring up, and I should have brought up, is that this past year, a lot of sewer work was done in our neighborhood, and we had a sewer line actually break, I guess it was a little bit before when the sewer lines were smoked. And our insurance company sent out a professional engineer to investigate, and the professional engineer used to work for Army Corps of Engineers. And the professional engineer indicated to me that I really should be calling Army Corps of Engineers, because he believes it's quite possible that the sewer lines broke off my house because the water table was drained and the clay soil compacted, and it's causing property damage.
It could happen. Especially on clay tile, it doesn't take too much settling of the soils if they, if they were previously moist. The, I know we're smoke testing out there. Unfortunately, you're talking to the right people about your sewer treatment plant, that's ours. And we've had a lot of problems with high and high infiltration, water into the, to the plant there. And so we're trying to find out where that water's coming from.
Still.
Still, still. Groundwater infiltration is a real curse of death to sewer plants. Commissioner Williams has been learning over the last few weeks with the residents over in Hidden End Valley Subdivision. Your tile out there is pretty old, too. Clay tile is very susceptible to that type of cracking, and if the ground, and I'm going to use a term that's probably not engineering, engineering correct, but if the soil is shrinking from moisture leaving the soil lower down, it very likely could occur.
Right, and last year, for the first time, like with all this rain, our front yard, like totally burned out. And my husband went to plant a tree, and he needed a pickaxe, and this was during the rain, and that's what clued us in that there's something happened. It used to be that when we dug in the front yard, we'd go down a foot and a half, two feet, we'd hit water.
Yeah, the water table was high. If the lake was feathered out there, you probably had a, you know, there was going to be moisture in the surrounding soils, obviously, very, very much so, and that moisture isn't going to be there anymore, because the lake was, the height of the lake was providing that moisture into the surrounding soils.
Right, and the gentleman from the, or the professional engineer from the, that used to work with the Army Corps, said that he's seen cast iron sewer pipes just rip right off a house because of that kind of settling. So I believe that there is property damage that's occurring that people aren't even seeing out there because of the shift of that water table. And much of that might have been picked up through the smoking of the sewers, and it's kind of sad, because again, that's the, that's monies that we're spending on something that happened to that property. So at this point, I guess I would like there to be a first step, an immediate step. And would you mind if I asked Dr. Buchanan to speak? Because he's sort of an expert on the animals and the mosquitoes, because I think we need to talk about this before we talk about the next step. Is that okay?
Sure, yeah. And I want to recognize Barry Taylor after the doctor comes up. I think, did you have something you want to say, too?
Okay, well, I wanted to conclude, just to make sure we all know what we're doing after he speaks.
Yes, absolutely.